Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Winnetka Village Council Regular Meeting for February 4th, 2020. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask everyone in the room to either turn off or mute your cell phones or other electronic devices. Trustee Kaledarchi will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He survived.
Well done. All right, Quorum. Rob, would you like to go ahead and check Quorum?
February 11th, study session and February 18 regular meeting. Let's look, okay.
It's the 18th?
Eighteenth. Okay, Bob. And then March 3rd, regular meeting.
I will not be here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment. This is the time of the evening where we open the microphone up to the general public to share their thoughts on anything that is not currently listed on the agenda. Would anybody like to address council on an item that is not on this evening's agenda? Seeing none, I will close public comments and we'll move forward with reports. Trustees, we'll start with you, Bob.
No report.
John?
No report.
Andy?
No report.
Jack?
The Landmarks Preservation just asked me to say that we had a meeting with Dakota yesterday with the Lakota group and we're going through the Plan Commission's ideas for trying to improve process and perhaps improve or advance the idea of the commission to try to protect historic houses or the housing stock in Winnetka and try to come up with ideas for reducing the amount of teardowns, demolition permits, trying to maybe turn people a little bit more towards the concept of renovation and preservation. And we had some, a good meeting and I thought some good ideas.
Great. Thank you. Work on the Comprehensive Plan continues and it's going to be a really exciting conversation that's going to be going on for the next year and a half, so stay tuned for that. Village Attorney?
No report tonight.
Village Manager?
Nothing tonight.
And Village President, I have no report this evening. Move forward to Item 6, Approval of the Agenda. Does any trustee wish to remove an item on the consent agenda for a separate vote? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the final form of the agenda?
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item 7 is the Consent Agenda and I'll ask the village clerk to read the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Approval of Village Council Minutes dated January 14, 2020, Study Session and January 21st, Regular Meeting. Approval of the Warrant List dated January 17 through the 30th, 2020, in the amount of $1,302,069.50. Resolution Number R-9, 2020, Purchase of a Police Vehicle for Adoption. Resolution Number R-10, 2020, Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Village of Kennelworth for Fire Inspection Services. Resolution Numbers R-12, 2020, and R-13, 2020, Establishing Manager and Department Head Salaries. And Resolution Number R-14, 2020, Approving a Contract with Power Line Supply for the Purchase of 600-Volt Underground Cable.
Thanks, Rob. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda by omnibus vote?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Lantheer?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Kaledarchi?
Okay, moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Item 8A, Ordinance Number MC-1, 2020, Establishing a Procedure for Reporting and Investigation of Sexual Harassment Claims Made by an Elected Official. Illinois lawmakers have passed legislation requiring public employers to amend their sexual harassment policies by February 10th. Here to review is Ann Erickson. Come on up, Ann.
Good evening, council. On January 1st, 2020, Public Act 101-022 became effective, which amends the State Officials and Employee Ethics Act. This requires public employers to amend their current sexual harassment policies to provide a mechanism for reporting and independent review of allegations of sexual harassment made by an elected official to another elected official. We worked with our village attorney to, on how best to update our current policies. The village attorney recommends that the village amend its code, Chapter 2.40, Prohibited Gifts and Political Activities, and to create a new section titled Sexual Harassment Training, Reporting, and Investigation. The new code amendment outlines that allegations of sexual harassment made by an elected official to another elected official shall be reported to the village's ethics advisor. The village's ethics advisor is the village manager or his designee. Additionally, the proposed code amendment provides that elected officials are to complete annual anti-harassment training. If council is amenable tonight, there is an option to waive introduction and adopt the ordinance, or alternatively, council can simply introduce the ordinance. Thank you.
Any questions for Ann on this?
No.
Ann, what's the scope of the annual training?
The annual training would be provided online through the Illinois Departments of Human Rights. We are also working with our Labor Council, Clark Baird Smith, to create anti-harassment training that would be administered village-wide, and we also plan to have that recorded as another alternative for completing the required harassment training.
Good, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, it's only between us and elected officials. What about other people?
So, at the village, we, for village employees, through our employee handbook, we do have anti-harassment and anti-discrimination policies already in place and procedures for reporting and investigating any allegations that are brought and risen to our level of attention.
Whether it's against an elected official or not?
Right.
This legislation was specific as to elected official, elected official.
Okay, all right. That makes you feel like they had something specific in mind.
Or they had a recent example, perhaps.
I made a call, what can I say? Along the line that you had asked, what about officials to employees? Is there ever, what would that fall under?
Existing.
That would fall under the employee handbook. Okay, even though, okay, even though it was, it'd be an official, okay. I, you know, just I think as a matter of course, I think this is, you know, a good thing. I mean, it's a no-brainer and I'm glad to see this implemented. I would suggest that we just go ahead and leave the introduction tonight. I mean, I don't know if anybody in the village feels, has an opinion about this, but I, unless there's any time pressure to go ahead and pass it tonight.
Well, there is.
Yeah, I see no problem with that. I mean, doing it tonight.
Do we, I mean, we need to go ahead and adopt it tonight, or?
Well, we don't have.
I mean, I, you know, it's, as I say, I don't see any problem with it, but I don't know if there's anybody who has an opinion on it.
We'll be in violation, but.
Well, I mean, if we're going to be in violation, we need to go ahead and pass it tonight, then we can go ahead and pass it.
Not to harp on.
Right, I mean, the 10th is the date, right?
10th is the date. Legal counsel has advised, since we're initiating the process tonight, it would be very unlikely that there would be any adverse ramifications if we were to just introduce the ordinance tonight.
There you go.
Not to harp on the idea of official to official. What about, like, public to officials or staff to officials? Where does that fall into play?
Sure. Any staff activity or conduct would be covered under our employee manual? If there is a member of the public that may be engaging in activity towards a staff member, there are reporting mechanisms within our policy to handle that.
And public to a council member?
Public to a council member is less clear. I'd have to.
Or the other way around.
Right.
Or the other way around. Yeah, no, I mean, but it's, those are good questions, eh?
But I think, I think in one sense, that would be a private matter, too.
Right.
Right.
On my own.
Not an organizational matter, but in with our policy for staff, it, there are multiple reporting opportunities, there's not just one path, so we tried to use best practices with respect to allowing a staff member to go to any point in the organization where they feel comfortable.
Okay.
If we can go back to the deadline, I mean, the deadline is the 10th.
Yeah.
So unless there's a reason to delay it, I would advise that we just get it done.
Go ahead, adopting it.
So we're not out of clients with the statute.
That's fine. Again.
Okay, would anybody in the audience like to speak to this issue? Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back up. Any other issues that everybody feel comfortable going ahead and waiving introduction and then going to adoption?
Yes.
Good, okay. Okay, so we will be waiving intro. Do I have a motion to waive the introduction of Ordinance Number MC-1, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Lantheer?
Yep.
Trustee Kaledarchi?
Motion carries. Now we'll move forward. May I have a motion to adopt Ordinance Number MC-1, 2020?
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Kaledarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Lantheer?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ann, good job.
Not to, I'm just, I'm, not that this is a bad, you know, again, I'm all in favor of this, but it was an awfully swift, you know, requirement in terms of us getting the ordinance written and passed.
Right. So, the legislation was passed out of the regular General Assembly session last year, and the majority of the attention of what was covered was legalization of recreational cannabis.
Right.
And we were made aware of this late in the year during the veto session.
Yeah, right.
That really kind of gave us December and then January to figure out what was the best way, best, not only the best policy, but where to place it.
Yeah.
And it took a little bit to put it together.
The other issue there was, it was, was, as Rob said, passed in the summer. There was an ambiguity in the statute about when the six-month period for doing this started.
Ah, right.
There are some that say it started on the effective date, which would be January 1st, so we'd have till June, but if you look at the language of the statute, it sounds like it's from the passage.
Right.
So they were busy doing cannabis and they were, the statute in a confusing way.
Nobody was really paying attention.
So this is just being safe.
Yep, so, again, interesting angle on our state lawmaking process. Thank you.
Check it off the list.
Ding.
Okay, Item B, Ordinance Number M-4, 2020, Amending a Special Use Ordinance for a Church at 1255 Willow Road. The Winnetka Presbyterian Church has applied for an amendment to their special use permit to allow some improvements on their property at Hibbert and Willow Roads. Here to review is Community Development Director David Schoen. David?
Thank you. So, the church is located on the north, or the northeast corner of Willow and Hibbert, and they received a special use approval in 2000 to allow them to construct an addition and to reconfigure the parking area and create that circular drive, because with that addition, they changed the entrance to the church to the east side. So, so there's a special use permit in place, and that's what we're considering amending this evening. As you can see, the area where the proposed plaza is going is on the west side along Hibbert. It's to create a space for a service that would occur in the columbarium when they are putting ashes to rest in the columbarium. This gives you a better idea of where that is locating. Currently, there's not a direct access point from the church to the columbarium. They have to walk around outside, on the sidewalk, across the grass to get to the columbarium. Their proposal is adding a door from the interior of the church and then creating this plaza area to have easier access to the columbarium. What I should say is when they started the application, when they received that special use approval in 2000, they also had to receive some variations, and one of those was the amount of impermeable surface on the site. So they, by adding additional impermeable surface, they were asking the ability to increase the allowed amount of impermeable surface, and I'll show a table of that in a moment. When they went to the ZBA and after receiving comments, they made some changes. So what you're reviewing tonight is what they're currently proposing. They had proposed a walkway from the plaza to the north driveway. They have removed that now to remove, reduce the amount of impermeable surface. The plaza has been reviewed by the Engineering Department or Division, and they have concluded that it does meet our requirements to be a permeable pavement system. And then it shows in the existing columbarium, they're also putting in that pavement system. Also to reduce the amount of impermeable surface, they are reducing what used to be the major main entrance to the church along Willow. There's a walkway there, and they're reducing that to seven feet in width to reduce the amount of impermeable surface. This table shows the code requirement, the maximum allowed of 42,000 square feet. The existing condition has 76,500. That's what the previous special use had approved. When they initially came in, they were increasing the amount of impermeable surface, but with the current proposal, it's basically about the same, about a quarter of a foot left. So, what happened was, the ZBA started the review process. They heard from four members of the public at the meeting. They also received some written correspondence, which is included in your packet. At that meeting, the neighbors expressed concerns about additional impermeable surface. So what is happening is, many years ago, when the church was constructed, there is a wall that was built along its north property line, and there's a grade change there between those homes on Ash and the church. And what happened that, happens then is the water wants to drain in this area in that direction, and then it pulls up into these neighbors' backyards. And they expressed concerns about additional impermeable surface for the plaza. Well, when, when the church was designed and this was created, they've, in essence, raised the, the area that the church is on, creating this wall. And they designed it to handle their impermeable water on their site for drainage. So the issue is not, so they expressed concerns about additional impermeable surface, and that's when the applicant went back and kept the amount of impermeable surface to what was previously approved under the 2000 special use permit. So, the neighbors do have concerns about the impact of this church that has been this way as long as Steve Saunders has been here, in terms of drainage in the area. From a staff perspective, given what they're proposing, they're not making the situation worse from a stormwater perspective, so we can't require them to fix that existing situation under our, our code. So, they made the adjustments after the ZBA meeting, and at the Plan Commission meeting, they presented an option to reduce the amount of the impermeable surface, and then the Plan Commission recommended approval based on what they were showing at the meeting, which was reducing the amount of impermeable surface. The Design Review Board doesn't review the zoning relief, they review the appearance of it, and they approved the design in, at their November meeting. The application was originally continued to the December meeting of the ZBA, but the applicant wanted more time, so then at that meeting, the ZBA continued it to their January 13th meeting, where they presented the revised plans, and the ZBA recommended approval by a five-to-one vote to recommend approval. The ZBA felt that the applicant had addressed reducing the amount of impermeable surface to what is currently allowed, allowed under the existing special use permit, and felt that the proposal was appropriate. The one member still expressed concerns regarding that existing drainage, drainage issue that the neighbors were, are experiencing, and that member voted against recommending approval. So that's a summary of where we're at. So before you is an ordinance for you to consider that would approve the amendment to the special use to allow them to build this plaza area.
Great. Okay, any questions for David from the Davis?
Yeah, so what year was it constructed originally? 1964, is that correct?
At least. I mean, we have some building permit additions in the 60s.
Yep. Okay, my recollection is that the cornerstone of the church says 1964, but I could be wrong. And so then, there isn't any indication in terms of the records that you have in terms of when, when that wall was built? The retaining wall for the parking lot?
No, we just assumed it was when the church was originally built, but we just have records of permits, not the details of the permits.
Right.
So we know there were some additions created in the early 60s.
Okay.
To the site.
Got it. So then, with a 2000 construction, there wasn't any, any real, what was the change to the parking lot? We don't know.
It was the surface.
It was just the surface.
It was changing the parking area so they could change the flow a little, so they could create that circular drive to the new entrance, so that was what the change was to the parking.
Second question is relative to the impermeable paving system relative to the, to the bluestone. What, you know, what, what does that look like? Can you talk about that a little bit more? I don't really understand that, I'm not that familiar with the engineering on that, so what does that entail?
So this is a detail sheet from their submittal, and on the right-hand side, there's a paver on the surface, and it's laid such that water can seep through that. And then, as you can see, there's this fine gravel, I don't want to say compact, but it also allows water to seep through it. So between that and when it gets to the pipe, you can see at the bottom, that white circle.
Right.
There's an opportunity for it then to be absorbed into the surrounding water, or soil, sorry, not water.
[laughing]
And then, once it gets to that pipe, then there's a control on it in terms of its release into our storm sewer system. So whatever water would then get to that point, there's control on it.
And then, what sort of maintenance is required to keep, keep that system operating so it flows, flows well? Is it, is there any, any maintenance involved, or is it just?
Yeah, there, there's some regular maintenance in terms of keeping the dirt, sand, whatever, in terms of those spaces in the pavers themselves.
Right.
Because you want to keep them so that the water can flow through those.
And then, one last question, I'm sorry, thank you for.
Don't apologize.
Is, relative to the gravel that's underneath the, sort of that open roof structure, that is, does that, that gravel area, you know, to catch the rainwater, is that considered permeable surface or semi-permeable, or what?
Any area that's covered by roof is not considered impermeable.
Well, it's got, well, no, it's, the roof is covered, but then there are holes in, in the roof for the rain to fall through, and then below that roof structure, you know, right next to where the columbarium is.
Sure.
Is, there's gravel underneath, there's pea gravel underneath that roof. And is that considered permeable or impermeable surface?
It would be considered impermeable surface.
Impermeable surface.
Yeah.
I think they were planning on skylighting those spaces.
A few of them.
That's, that's a question, oh, right.
Yeah, they were going to, some skylight covers on a few of them, again, as part of this gathering space for services.
Yeah, it's, so was there any discussion about using any of that, that portion underneath the roof to make that, that more impermeable, or it doesn't make any difference relative to calculations?
Well, there wasn't discussion about that, and, no, there wasn't discussion. I mean, and then we're talking about just those square areas where the water comes through.
Yeah, but I mean, but the, the practicality of it is, is that, that, that becomes sort of a catchment basement, basin for the rainwater in that, that particular section, but, okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Couple of questions. The permeable pavers with that stone base and that drainage pipe, actually is going to drain a lot more than just that patio.
Yeah, right.
Any grass around it that's collecting a lot of water, it's going to find its way into there and then get released. So I guess they're improving that, is what I'm getting at, which is good. Reducing that walk was great, to make your impermeable numbers match up, that's good. Currently, does any water from the church parking lot drain into those yards on Ash?
No.
Okay. So they're really containing and managing their own water.
Mm-hmm.
So basically, there was just a.
Basically, a dam.
Backyard problem that could be addressed with proper drainers of some type if they wanted to.
No. No, that was created by the wall.
Right, but.
Well, it's, it's an unusual, it's an unusual area back there, because the property slopes off to the, the property from Ash slopes to the south, and the one on the Willow slopes to the west, and so when they put in that retaining wall, there's, there's literally no place for the water to drain anymore. So it's a separate issue from this.
Right, exactly.
It is, it is difficult, because there is no place to run, run water to from.
It is might be more.
Billy? Except they, except by building the wall and the parking lot, they block natural flow, which I thought that the ordinance is supposed, I thought that our code says you're not supposed to block natural flows.
Right.
When you build parking lots and walls, and.
So. You couldn't build that today.
Right.
The standards were much different 50 years ago.
But the flooding seems to, I mean, Leslie Farmer's letters seems to indicate that the flooding is much, much worse.
It's because we have more water.
For other reasons.
Yeah, we have more water.
So, but you were saying in your, in your opening, that we can't have the church put in French drains along the wall on the underside and drain that water into their stormwater system to, to, to give relief to the landowners along the side. There's nothing that we can do to have that happen?
We cannot require them to do that.
It's not the church's water.
No, but it's, they put up the wall in the parking lot that created the flooding. Is, so the, one of the things I noticed, there was a letter, I think from the architect, that indicated that they were doing more than required for the permeable plaza. There was statements in the letter, "We're doing this, but we don't have to." And I thought that letter predated the modifications that they made to the plan that they, that we now have before us. Do you know if there's any intent to change or reduce the amount of retention that they had provided for in this, the extra? I don't know if I'm making this. They, there's a letter that says, "The permeable pavers that we're putting in, we've put this stone base under it and it's draining, even though we don't have to do that, we're putting in extra storage to hold water, to drain water from the area." I was wondering if they're planning on not doing that now that they've reduced the size.
No, they, they are doing that, and that's part of the calculation in terms of their impermeable surface amount. They are putting in the permeable pavers.
Farmer also pointed out that there was a, that one of the problems is, is that with all of this water not soaking into the ground but being put into pipes and released into the Winnetka stormwater system, it gets flooded and overwhelmed, and so the more water you collect and provide for space to drain, the worse the problem gets in terms of flooding the overall neighborhood. Does, is, is the size of this plaza so small that that may not be a huge consideration?
Well, is it so small?
Is this plaza going, is there, is there so much water that's going to be collected by this plaza that it's going to create a problem as it drains into the Winnetka stormwater system?
No, because the system is being designed to control the release of it. I mean, there's going to be a point when, in this part of the community that's in the flood plain, that the ground's going to become saturated, and there's going to be more issues than what this would create in that situation. But this is being designed to help try to absorb the water underground, once it gets below the pavers, and then whatever doesn't get absorbed, then will be collected in this pipe and then controlled in its release. So this is tied to a storm sewer on, near the Willow and Hibbert intersection that's separate from the storm sewer. separate from the storm sewer that Ash immediately ties into. However, they all end up in the same place because they're all going to the southwest.
Is the release of the water from the holding area underneath the permeable pavers, is that, it's held back, or is it immediately released?
It has a control mechanism on it.
So, which means what?
It slows the release of the water. I mean.
Right. And so the restrictor, I'm just asking, I'm asking leading questions so you can explain it. So that the restrictor valve keeps, how long is the water kept in? When is the water released?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Maybe is the applicant here?
Yes.
Can I ask you a couple of questions before we get to the applicant?
Sure.
The 2000 relief that was granted, I saw that there was a reference to calculating additional water flow and providing compensatory storage. I saw that in the documents, but was that done? Was additional detention installed?
Yes.
Okay. And there's been a little bit of discussion, even tax-exempt properties are, they pay the stormwater fee, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then you mentioned that we can't require anything in terms of the French drain idea or whatever, but, and this might be more of a question for Peter. In terms of granting a special use permit at this particular location, given its sensitivity, if we were to request as a condition certain things be done to assist or the overall kind of problem we've got, that's, that's not an issue, is it?
Well, I think the issue is ordinarily, no, but as I understand it, the way they've restructured or revised this, they are not adding anything to what's existing out there. So you can always make conditions, but the conditions usually have to have some nexus to what you're giving them. And if what we're giving them doesn't change anything, then to ask them to do what you're suggesting may be, maybe going over the line. You can always ask, I mean, you know.
Yeah, I would ask. And I'll tell you what I'm thinking later, but the nexus, as I see it, is that there's a design problem for the church. It's a serious one that needs to be fixed. We can't have people, you know, at a memorial service slipping down. That's no good. But that rises out of the same relief that we granted. And I don't mean to criticize the people that granted that relief in 2000 because we've learned a whole bunch of things since 2000.
You know, by the way, I think I was on the council that granted.
Well, then I am going to bash those people.
That's great.
But, you know, we weren't, we weren't thinking about things, frankly, the way we are now. And it seems like with the benefit of hindsight, the church has learned some things, and we've learned some things. And not to be mysterious, what I'm thinking about is, look, we've got a stormwater plan that we're working very hard to implement. That may help with some of the localized flooding, it may not. There still may be localized flooding in those backyards. What I would like to see as a condition to granting, and I'm just going to throw it out there, to granting any special use permit is two things. That we ask the applicant to simply agree to reasonably cooperate with the village in efforts to address localized flooding for properties adjoining the church, including by working with us, if we request an easement on the property, either for addressing localized flooding or as part of the overall stormwater system under any paved or unimproved surfaces, that they would negotiate in good faith with us on that. And I have no doubt that the church would negotiate in good faith with us, and that any expense associated with that would be at our expense. That way, I feel like the church is unfairly taking a little bit of the blame for a problem that's the village's fault. And I don't want there to be a perception that the church is callous or indifferent to that. But realistically, I don't think we necessarily need the property, but you know what? Right now, we're all kind of revisiting something with the benefit of hindsight. I would like us to be positioned, if we look at it and we think, you know, it would be nice to add a French drain, even with our new stormwater system, and to have something in place so there's an understanding. Frankly, it would be my expectation that the church would be a good partner with us on that.
If I could even take that one step further, but I'll wait, I'll wait it later, but.
Yeah, if I can add to that, though, the ideal spot for that French drain.
Yeah.
Is in the backyards of the Astree properties at the lower elevation.
Right.
So you don't need the church property.
Well, we might need access to the system.
No, but I'm saying, the shortest distance between the French drains and possible exit wouldn't be through all of their yards. It would be.
Through the parking lot.
Through the parking lot. There may be, there may be drainage in the parking lot or under the parking lot that you could hook this into and then drain the four or five houses along that side.
Or if we even wanted to add additional detention under that parking lot to address those backyards.
I mean, because if you go and look at the property, there is, there is a gap, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure if the fences are along the property line, or if, you know, the backyard, or if it's the retaining wall that's along the church property line. But there, there is a gap. I mean, there is an area that, you know, is a logical place to run drainage. But I think relative to timing, well, again, we can talk about this after we've let everybody speak, but I, you know.
Yeah, I think we're getting too far into like the planning ahead.
Into the weeds.
In the weeds, right.
They're giving us a revised plan that they've worked with the staff and everybody to really give us the same amount of impermeable as they currently have.
I know. I get that. And we could make an incremental improvement, but I'm seeing something bigger.
No, I agree.
Yeah. And I do have a question for the petitioner when that comes up.
Okay, just to build on what Andy was suggesting, and with, you know, John, you're 100% right. Putting a French drain on the church side of the wall does absolutely nothing for the people on Ash. But the cretin contractor in me, who likes to think really simple, that all you have to do is core some holes in that retaining wall to allow the water to continue its southward flow, and you've solved the problem. But I think too simple sometimes. Well, except, except maybe the parking lot.
Too elevated?
If you core a hole down to down here, and the top of the wall is here, the water's going to flow from that backyard in the Ash Street and flow, continue its southward flow to.
I would like.
But anyway, I mean, that's just, that's just me trying.
And the point of my suggestion is, I just want us to have, our experts have the opportunity to think creatively about a big problem that frankly affects the church, it affects the village, it certainly affects the neighbors. Yeah, I agree, the plan makes an incremental improvement, but we're here now looking at something that, with hindsight.
All right, well, let's, let's let the applicant come on up, and maybe you can tell us your story a little bit, or address some of the things that you're hearing up here.
My name is John Weber. I'm appearing for Bob Lewis, who was called out of town. One comment, at the north side of the church property where that retaining wall is, it was built in 1960 when the church was built, there is about a three-foot area between it and the north property line that can receive and retain water. And the properties to the north, to the east of the church, all drain from Willow to the north, as the properties on Ash drain from Ash to the south. And the low point is in the middle of that lot, between the south properties and the north. And the same was true of the church property. That's why the retaining wall was built, and three feet was left to hold water so it didn't stay on the neighbors' yards. And way back at that time, then all the water that fell on the church property stayed on the church property, didn't go to the neighbors. And the church should try to keep that area clean. I don't know if it ever drained completely to the west, where Hibbert is now higher, but the northern people's water drains to the lot lines and also on the church property's well at that wall.
Yeah.
That hits exactly what you're talking about, Andy. That's a good call. Okay.
Yeah. And I, I don't, I wouldn't want you to have to speak for the entire church then, but I am guessing that if we were to ask, if we were to look at it and think we can make a little improvement here or there, that the church would work with us to address that.
Certainly, and we'd try to keep that area clean.
Yeah.
And also where this new surface is being put is now grass.
Yeah.
You know, and absorbs water. So we're careful to absorb the same.
You know, this could be one of those mitigation zones, too.
Yeah, right.
So, you have anything else to add or offer for us?
No, the church is, of course, there at the property where you enter the village, coming east on Willow, and you see the church, and we're trying to make, it's not a very large area, to make the columbarium work better, have a door straight into the church, and make it as attractive as we can. It's really a very small facility. But it's an entrance to the village. We want the church to be attractive.
It is, yeah.
Understand. Okay, great. What I'd like to do is open it up for public comment. Would anybody from the audience like to speak on this item? Come on up. You can take a seat, sir. Thank you.
Hey, John, one quick thing that you might let the church know. When I went over today and I was looking, you know, in that area, try to keep clean, there's, a box spring has been dumped back there. So you may want to let them know that it means they may want to take it out.
I looked at it.
Yeah, thanks.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Carol Hyatt, and we live at 1240 Ash. My husband, sorry, he couldn't be here tonight, but he's in agreement with what I have to say. And you all have covered pretty much of this already, so I won't take too long. But I do appreciate the fact that the church is willing to scale down their plan a bit. We're still a little concerned because the prospect of any more water is not good. We already flood in our backyards, and as has been discussed, because of this wall interrupting the normal flow of water from north to south, it pools in our backyard. We have water there all the time. We've only been in the house about three years, and it seems to be getting worse. We actually, sorry, I'm a little hoarse, but I haven't been to China. We even had water in our backyard earlier this week with the melting snow, and we only had, what, an inch of snow? So it's really bad. And, but we're a little concerned thinking that because all the water's going to drain into the sewer system, everything's going to be okay, because we all know that in a situation where there's a lot of rain, the system isn't going to handle it. So even a tablespoon more is not good. And we're just hoping that maybe this could be postponed till after the stormwater situation gets a little further along. And we certainly do appreciate all the work that you all have done on behalf of our town. And I know you're, you've got your pedal to the metal, and we really appreciate that. Let's see. So, and I do appreciate all the thoughts that you have tonight, and that would be just great if the village could go hand in hand with the church and try to alleviate some of this flooding, because it seems like we're going to get more storms, more frequent, and more violent storms. And we've really been lucky the last few years, you know, not much has happened, but it seems like it's only a matter of time. So it just seems like if possibly this could be postponed, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Great, well, thank you.
May I ask a question? Is that possible, or no?
No.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Arlene Chevellas Keel from 1220 Ash Street. My husband similarly was not able to come tonight. We came to the first, that first zoning meeting. One of the things that I wanted to express, when you had that first zoning meeting, we were notified by letter that the meeting took place, et cetera. And then at that meeting, there were certain things that, first, there was going to be a December meeting, then they were going to change the proposal, then there was a January meeting. And we didn't get notifications unless you went onto the website to look. And I was in and out of town, as was my husband. So we weren't able to come to them. So that's kind of a concern. I think communication is a big thing, whether by email or by letter, because we are one of the properties that the drainage comes down to, okay? And from the time we renovated our house in 2011, and we moved in in 2013, okay, we still have had, and we've done, spent thousands to make sure that our house and our property, our main property, doesn't get flooding, but we still get flooding in that back area. So as Carol mentioned, you know, my hope, and again, I'm not all of you, is why, and I appreciate the reason for columbarium. I'm Greek Orthodox, I'm a Christian person, and I understand that, but I don't understand the need to do it when, when now, I clip, my husband thinks I'm like a crazy person, because every time there's any notification about the stormwater plan, I follow it and I'm reading it. You know, when is this happening? You know what I mean? I get so excited. Do you know what I mean? Every time something is approved, why couldn't this wait, is what I'm saying to you, so that whatever they're asking for, and again, you're right, hindsight is a great thing. We can't go back to something that was approved, you know, 20 years ago. But I'm asking you, what, what proof do we have that this, if this is approved today, and this plaza is made in the next, whatever, short period of time, what proof do we have that it won't impact our property, and that it won't get worse? Because the flooding is there. So I don't understand why there's such an urgency to do it right now and not incorporate it as part of the whole stormwater management plan. So that's my comment.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Leslie, you want to chime in?
I think everybody got my letter and my email, so I believe my concerns were expressed. I, I am far enough away in my backyard that it's not directly impacted, like my other two neighbors, by average flooding. But the entire area is impacted by the extreme storm events. And Chris, I know, you lived in my neighborhood, you know how bad it is in those events. I, I'm sorry. I, any system that drains into the stormwater system is absolutely useless in an extreme storm event, because I, in those events, watch the stormwater bubbling up from my stormwater drain outside in my street, into my street, over my parkway, over my sidewalk, into my yard. And when it gets within about 10 feet of the house, I start to get seepage in the basement, which I have spent at least $50,000 trying to remediate because everything is so saturated. But you have to understand, this water is not our own water. We're, we've all flashed our downspouts years ago. This is water that's coming from our neighbors, and it's coming up through the, so the stormwater system is completely overwhelmed. And you can't say that their drainage system is, which drains into a stormwater system that's actually creating the problem, is going to have any effect in those kinds of rains. It may well, you know, it may well function as it's supposed to during normal rains. But my concern is in the extreme events, which we've all, we all know you guys are working your tails off to negotiate with all the intergovernmental agencies. And, you know, I would, I just would like, okay, if we actually get something in place and we get some relief, I, fine, revisit it. We can all build bigger patios, you know, it's fine. But I know you wouldn't grant me one square foot, and I wouldn't expect my neighbors either a variance, so, in, you know, the area we live. And it has nothing to do with being in a floodplain, by the way, because we do not get water from the Skokie Lagoons. When they raised Hibbert Road, that saved us from, we're still technically in the floodplain because in the 1930s, when they were building the Skokie Lagoons, somebody screwed up, a human error, and water did actually flow down our streets. So we're technically in the floodplain. But we don't get, in those extreme events, our water from the Skokie Lagoons. We get to pay flood insurance to FEMA, even though we really aren't ever going to be in danger of flooding anymore from the Skokie Lagoons. So we really get it both ways. We're getting our water from stormwater backup, okay? It's because the stormwater system is completely overwhelmed and inadequate. And so being in the floodplain has nothing to do with our flooding problem. It's just the way things go. But I appreciate all your work, and I think we all would feel much more comfortable if we had our project in place and there was relief. Certainly, nobody would care. But I guess my concern is really in the extreme weather events, that there is no drainage system that's going to have, that's going to work. So, anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Leslie. Would anybody else like to speak on this issue? We can bring it back up here for more conversation. What do you guys think?
There we go. When I read this proposal, or whatever, you know, the plaza itself is not that big of an issue to me, but the location, the. But the location, the issue that's right in front of us here, I just, when I started reading about it, it was like, this is the epicenter of our problem right now, it seems, with these folks in the tree streets. And I agree with the neighbor that, and I talked to David, I had conversations with David about this, email and telephone conversations. You know, I just, I don't know that if you tinker with anything over there, I don't know if you walked over to the church, and I, you know, I have nothing against the church. But that property at 85% impermeable has to have created some issues at some point for those neighbors. And I know we're looking backwards, but it just didn't feel right to me at all, where we are with stormwater, to tinker with anything in that area. I mean, John, you can say, well, it's going to help. I don't think we really know that it would help the situation or not. It's, and we're about to embark on this right there, that's where it's going. And I, you know, I just, I feel terrible for the neighbors. I see the wall, see the pictures of the backyards, and I'm just saying, you know what? Sort of agree with the neighbors here that enough is enough on this, and let's get the stormwater system done. And, you know, but if it passes here, you know, it passes, I don't think it's going to make a major difference. But I do have an issue with it. And I also have an issue with the fact that the neighbors were not noticed on this meeting. And I don't know exactly all the procedures. I did talk to David about it. And on something like this, I really, I feel like the neighbors should be made aware that this is now coming to a final decision at the council level. And to not be made aware of it, you know, I think is a disservice on an issue like this. So there are different levels of issues I have here. And anyway, that's where I stand.
Yeah, I wanted to say one thing on the communication piece, because we are working on a new website. And what I'm hoping we'll be able to do with this new technology is if an item comes up, let's just say it comes up anywhere in the approval process, a resident can just click on a box that says, "Let me know." And every time any sort of meeting or discussion is noticed about that, they'll be able to click on the box the first time, and then it'll, it'll, they'll get an email or a little ding of one sort or another every time the conversation is happening. That's the beautiful thing about a new website, we can do a lot of cool stuff like that. I'm, you know, Bob, I think this shines a bigger light on some of the systemic issues we have with our planning zoning approval process. Because, you know, in a much more magnified sense, we saw this in One Winnetka. Nobody could figure out who the heck was hearing what at what time. And then the plan had changed, and where's it going next? And, you know, truthfully, us up here at council couldn't figure it out half the time. So, you know, I certainly think that it's time for us sometime during the year to sit down with David in a study session environment, talk about the process so that we have something that makes sense. There's something intuitively wrong about, and I'm not bringing the church, calling them out on this, because this happens all the time. An applicant comes in, they make their initial presentation, they make a change, or they go to design review, and they make some adjustments. And then at some point in time, which we don't know when that is or if that is, they find their way back to the process again. And we should be much more clear as far as workflow, as if revisions are made to a certain proposal, where does it go and how does it work? Right now, it is kind of helter-skelter, because it just keeps marching through. And this time around, if I'm not mistaken, and again, David, there's no criticism here, it's just the way the system is, that they ended up at zoning again, right? And which, they started in zoning, went through all this other stuff, and then finally ended up back at zoning, and you guys didn't know what the heck was going on. So I think this little checkbox on the website will solve some of that. But I also think we have a systemic issue here that we need to talk about and think if there's a better way to just process these things so that projects don't bounce back and forth and people get confused as far as what they're looking at. So I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in that heavy. Go ahead, guys.
Yeah, I'll put my two cents in. I'm very cognizant of stormwater, obviously. That's one of my key reasons of being here. Got to get that fixed. But what's brought before us today is a total wash of impermeables, by calculations. And the water they're talking about in their backyards today isn't because of a major rain event. You can easily, whoever pays for it, I'm not sure how, put it, you can easily get a permit to put a drain in that backyard and probably tie into your storm sewer system on Willow Run, around Ash, and take care of that drainage problem. That water, like that sitting here today, from a snowmelt, would be gone. The big events where we got sewers backing up, yeah, that's a whole system-wide problem. But I mean, that is something that could be taken care of, I believe, without impacting the church or having an issue with the church. So I am totally cognizant of stormwater, but I really think that what's presented today is okay, with me at least, because the numbers work. The one question I had for the applicant was, they're saying now the columbarium needs a plaza. How was the original design laid out that didn't need that plaza? And how has it worked for all those years without the plaza? That would be, I'm not sure.
Well, you saw the picture of how it's working now.
Right, but it was designed that way, and it's been that way for a long time. Was it possibly in the record that they wanted to have that plaza and we wouldn't give it to them? I don't know. You know, I'm not sure what got to the point where they don't have it. Right.
For a long time. I mean, just, yeah. The plaza, I understand that that would be a nice addition. I mean, and it would be, but, and Andy, you make a good point. I mean, I, I mean, my understanding, to grant a special use, we could make contingencies if we wanted to, you know, regardless of a nexus, Peter. I mean, you know, we could do that in terms of asking for cooperation, or however far we wanted to go on that. But we know for a fact that we're dealing with one of the streets that has the major problem of stormwater here. And if we do anything, in my opinion, anything that potentially could possibly exacerbate that problem, I don't want a piece of that until we're done with our storm sewer system.
And that's what I think is the nexus, honestly. And that's why, so I was involved with the drafting, I believe, of the ordinance that gives 25% credit for the impermeable. I remember that discussion. I'm not imagining that, am I? Yeah, okay. Sometimes it all pairs together. And I don't want to say that I felt like it was spitballing, but there is some uncertainty about how you, like, there's no magic to that 25%. It's not, I was about to say, written in the Bible, I'm sorry. But it's not, you know, it's, there's some amount of just, well, we think that's, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty here, you know? And does removing some sidewalk on the, you know, south side of the building compensate for the possible effect of, you know, maybe increasing the problem on the west side? I don't know. I think there's a lot of uncertainty. And what I would, frankly, what this had me thinking about this whole thing is, I'd like to see an ordinance that frankly, any property owner in an area where we're looking at possibly needing to undertake mitigation efforts as a condition to any permit, you simply have to agree with us that you're going to reasonably cooperate with us. It's going to be at our expense, but you have to cooperate with us. And I can't imagine a single property owner that would have a problem with that, because we're trying to fix the same problem for everybody. I tend to agree with you, John, probably, and I know you're more than probably, I, this is not going to make the problem worse, probably maybe even marginally improves it. But I don't really care about that either. I think the kind of incremental thing got us to this point we're at now. And again, I do feel like the church has sort of been unfairly put in the middle of something that's our fault. The village's fault. I think it's our fault. And we granted this relief, we allowed these conditions to develop, we allowed these properties to develop over the years. And so I think it's somewhat of our responsibility to take upon ourselves to fix it. This is an opportunity, I think, to just say, if there's something we can do to help as part of our overall storm plan, or in this particular area that requires, whether it's running, I don't know what it is. It could be running a pipe across a parking lot or something. I mean, how outraged would you all be if we grant this relief and someone said, "No, you can't come on our property"? I mean, that'd be insane, right? So all I'm saying is, let's not have that crazy situation. And as long as we're good there, then let's let the engineers tell us if there's something that can be done. If they just say, you know what, you're good, because we're going to build massive detention tanks about 30 feet away, which we are, great, then no issue. In the meantime, I see no reason to risk somebody on a walker slipping down a hill at a memorial service. Like, that's, I can't, I can't stomach that either. So I don't think we should, and Leslie, if you came in and asked for a patio, I would take the same approach. You know, that as long as we can do it in a cooperative way, I don't think life should stop in the flooding area. But I do think we have to look more than two feet ahead. And so, Peter, I, you know, I think we're good with a nexus. Someone wants to sue me. God bless them.
Yeah, I didn't have a concern with your condition.
Okay, good. All right. So I would impose that condition, and then I would approve it, and I appreciate everything the church has done to mitigate this. And then I would hope, and what I would ask is, we suggest that as a condition, continue this, allow you all to discuss internally. I don't want there to be any, like, jamming somebody. I just, and I'll phrase it out, what I'm thinking. But literally, it's just, please work with us reasonably and in good faith. You don't have to agree to anything except that. And I'm good with that. I think that that's a reasonable thing to do. Jack, you're awful quiet.
I was just waiting my turn. I don't, I mean, I don't think that the size of the plaza, combined with the detention underneath and the valves to restrict the flow of water into the system, will be a problem for the majority of rain events and water events that that would create. It's, I don't think that that is the major problem, that this is all raising. I think that the problem is, is that the pre-existing flooding that's going on on the other side of the wall is the real problem. And like Andy's saying, I think that if we can work to solve that problem, I don't, and I'm not, I'm not saying that that one's linked to granting the, you know, putting in the pavers. I think that that's fine, that's not going to make a difference. And again, I agree with the idea of not stopping everything in the floodplain until stormwater's built. This isn't a huge, it's not like they're putting in their parking lot now, which would collect all that water and dump that into the system. That already exists. This is a new, smaller thing. And as they say, there's some reduction, they're doing what they can to reduce it. But I do think that solving as much as possible the neighbors' problems with flooding is a good idea. I think that that's, seems to be appropriate for the village to try to accomplish that task, because we'd be helping not only all the people who go to that church with their, with payment to use the columbarium in a way that they see necessary. We'd also be helping the neighbors with a central issue in their lives, which is trout and ducks in their backyard all year long. So I think that, I think that approving the special use, but with, as Andrew's saying, Andy's saying, putting in the conditions that we try to work towards a solution of draining all that flooding. And try to get the, try to get the water that's bugging the church on the east side as well, and see if there can't be a way to try to get all of that water drained away from there, so both parties can get that accomplished. It's all going to go into the system, but nothing that we're designing in stormwater, I think, is going to be impacted by having French drains drain into our water system now.
Right. Well, one thing we all need to remember is, you know, throughout our conversations on stormwater, Steve Saunders mentions these mitigation zones, which are little potholes all over the place, that just don't drain, period. And, you know, part of the strategy is to, is to get bleeders into these mitigation zones so we can also deal with this area behind the walls, a perfect example. I'd bet if we, I would just about bet that if we pulled that map out, that we'd see there's a little blue circle around this area. There's quite a few of them from Willow all the way up to Westmore. They're just weird little potholes that, because for whatever reason, they just don't drain. And some of them, you know, I know Steve said some of them are a little bit more challenging, and would probably take some contribution from the owners. This one seems really easy. I mean, it's just a simple, it's a simple drain tile or something that runs from point A out to Hibbert, and then, like you said, Andy, it's 30 feet away. It would be insane to think that we drain the whole village, but yet we can't drain a hole like this that's just across the street. Just so people know, we have spot fixed some other kind of similar things, so it's doable. And we do follow through on this stuff. But there's actually two issues, the way I hear it, is that, I'm not voting, so it doesn't matter, but there's, well, there's five, so. Trust me, I know how to count. But the reality of it is, is that I lost my train of thought, so.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. It doesn't take much to distract me, anyway, so. Penny, you have some follow-up you want to add?
I do, but Bob has a question first.
Andy, on a, on a condition to the special use, could the language be, does it have to be so general, or can it be more specific to the concern that we're seeing here with this specific set of residents? I mean, can it be, have a little more teeth to it than, you know, reasonably good faith? And so I know there's this body of law around good faith and all this, but.
Yeah, I mean, the reason I took that approach, I did think about that as well before coming in here tonight, is frankly, there's a lot that would have to be informed by our experts. And so I'd be hesitant to say they have to agree to one particular thing. But I think if we identify generally, the subject matter is either helping to address the localized flooding at the adjoining properties, and/or cooperating with the overall stormwater management system, because again, this is at the ground zero. I think those are the two things where we want cooperation. What that actually means, what we'd be requesting, we may need absolutely nothing. Frankly, we probably need absolutely nothing, given the size of the tanks we're putting in over there. But if we have an engineer, as we get deep into this stuff, and they say, you know what? Those backyards are never going to drain unless we do this. I want us to be able to say, hey, you know, give us access to your property so we can inspect and possibly put a pipe under there, or something like that. And so the idea of the language saying that they'll reasonably cooperate, including by negotiating good faith for an easement, I don't think it's fair, I wouldn't do this to anybody, say, give us an easement without us saying what it is, what the conditions of it are, but saying that you have to negotiate in good faith, it's going to be at our expense. You know, they could say no, but there is case law on the good faith issue. And I think that's fair. And frankly, we're a community of neighbors, and I think to some extent, we have to operate that way.
I, you know, I, I'm not an engineer, but I would be willing to bet that, that after we put in the storage across the street, that it will help the issue, but it's just the way the land falls that it just can't drain. I have a very similar situation in my yard, so I'm very familiar with it. So I really like this idea that we, as a village, move to help remediate it, because it, you know, it's, in all this time, since the 1960s, it hasn't gotten any better. I don't know what process we would take at this point. Do we, do we table this and come back? And, I mean, it makes sense, I think, to have, you know, a village engineer, you know, take a look at it. And I just feel like we don't have enough information to make a good proposal at this point in time. But I think we should move forward. So what do we do?
I don't think this, this rises to the level of engineering input, Penny, and I don't, I don't think that's what Andy was talking.
No, 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 no. What I mean in terms of, I mean.
And certainly putting a condition that they do anything to solve an existing condition that fundamentally isn't on their property, I, I don't know if that's appropriate or not.
Well, I mean, because the question, a basic question.
Now you're asking for a commitment for them to fix this.
Well, no. I mean, a basic, a basic question would be, is, you know, where does it run? How do we, you know, I, anyway.
Well, until we design the system, we won't have those answers.
Right, right.
It may be nothing. I just, if we need some cooperation assistance, I just would want, and I'd want this from anybody in this area, just their commitment to cooperate with the village.
And not to sound unreasonable, the property owners are here, but at the same time, I'm sure they probably would want to, they also have to. sure they probably would want to, they also have to negotiate good faith and all that to work in their backyards.
Yeah, and, and that's why I was saying...
Not getting that, but I'm sure they would, but you just never know.
That's why I was saying, I could almost envision an ordinance saying, any permit approval in this, in these sensitive areas requires a commitment that you'll cooperate with us. It's, I don't think that's an unreasonable answer.
And I go back to, there's no change in impervious, that we should approve it tonight as is.
What, what, under the current stormwater plan, everything went according to plan, when would this area see the alleviated remediated stormwater problem? I mean, if you had to...
The initial relief comes when we build the storage, which would be within the next few years, if we stay kind of on the schedule that we're looking at.
The next few years, next three years?
Two, three years. You know, once, once, once Duke Childs goes in, and the pipe goes across the street to the forest preserve, and those two would go at the same time, anyway, the relief is, is going to be there. Not a hundred-year relief, but a lot of relief. And then the conveyance, obviously, makes sure that the water gets there fast enough not to end up in the yards. But they will get substantial relief just from the buil-, building of the storage. And by substantial, half, you know...
But without putting the drain in their backyard, it's not going to change one bit, no matter what you do across the street.
Or the retention wall comes down.
Well, I mean, it's, it's built up...
And more water goes in the yard from the parking lot.
It's, it's...
And it goes in the parking lot, and more water goes in the yard.
The whole grid is built up, and you can't just take down the wall.
Nothing flows north. If you take the wall down, it will. I don't think water flows uphill.
Well, it might flow off the parking lot, if the parking lot's higher than the lane...
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, right, it's...
Is the, do, do we know what the water table level is?
No.
High.
It doesn't matter.
No, I'm just saying, there, there, the area that doesn't drain could be close to, I mean, I go into my backyard, I dig a hole, I have water, you know, that close...
Andrew, I think it's...
...to the surface of land, so...
The flood elevation is six twenty-seven.
Yeah. No, I know that, but I'm saying, you've got the lagoons over by there. And then, we have this former Skokie Swamp that had a water table that was...
It's at the lagoon's level.
X number of feet.
Yeah.
So, so my thought is, is that, the, will the, will the retention or the detention that we're putting in drain, lower the water table?
Oh, well, no, you, you're not going to lower the water table, because that's a natural occurrence. But what you will do is, is alleviate all of the overland flooding.
But where you've got ponding, you're still going to have...
We can't go underground and collect water.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying that the...
I guess we could, but...
And a low spot is still a low spot, period.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so, okay, well, look at, let's, you know, either we're going to move this forward or not. One last question for the applicant. I, I mean, you heard trustee Kreip make mention of, of some conditions of potential approval that include a commitment to work collaboratively with the village, and, and allow us to propose various improvements that would benefit the entire area?
I would think that church, for certain causes, neighborhood problems that really create this...
Yeah, it's a neighborhood problem, right.
...to make, matter of fact, we just know a lot of that water that used to run north and on our property.
I just can't picture water running north, so, okay.
No, when, what I think what he's saying, is before the church was built...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Some water did flow north. So, when they raised the parking lot to make it flow south, they actually reduced some natural runoff to the north.
Gotcha, okay.
But the only thing the church do is probably to get some kind of storm drain, that, that low area, you know, the wall, right, and then you retain it. Right now, there's a retention area now...
Right, right.
Which doesn't have a storm sewer to go into, but it retains there and eventually disappears.
And that, that three-foot drainage area is church property, right?
The columbarium area really doesn't change anything.
Right. But the, the three-foot drainage area along the wall is church property?
The church property. Actually, there was a utility basement there, too, I think. We used to have electric poles.
So, maybe we have an easement.
Right, right. Let's make sure we get, well, if we, if we have to go south, it'd sure be nice to have that option.
Yeah.
So...
You can't water it?
Mm-hmm. Well, it's, and, and I think Leslie made a really good point. None of it's our water. It's water from up on the hill that ends up finding its way down into our neighborhood. So, that's the problem. If it was just our water, meaning each individual property owner's water, it would be one thing, but it's water from everywhere that just ends up there at the end of a larger event, so...
But while you can do it somewhere...
Well, then it just backs up...
It's what we do right now, and that doesn't work very well.
Then it just backs right back up into your...
Okay, well...
So, where are we?
Where are we?
I, I could make a motion to introduce the condition.
You, you want to make a motion to introduce the ordinance as amended by the condition?
Right.
And if you, if you need to read it again, you can read it again. And then, if that gets passed, I would not suggest that we try to adopt it tonight.
Oh, my gosh, no, no.
Okay. We would come, just make sure...
I would suggest we publish it first.
We would come back with the language in the ordinance for adoption at the next meeting, if that was the vote.
No.
Yeah.
No, what?
No, I'm just saying, no, we're, there's no way that I would even ask...
Right, okay.
Uh-uh. So, is, is that a motion?
Yeah, so I would make a motion to introduce the ordinance, subject to the following condition. And when I lay this out, I would say that we'll want to type this up and see how it looks, and discuss it further. But as a condition to granting the special use permit, the applicant shall reasonably cooperate with the village in addressing localized flooding at adjoining properties, including by negotiating in good faith, if requested by the village, to establish an easement on the applicant's property under any paved or unimproved surfaces, as may be reasonably required, either in connection with addressing localized flooding at adjoining properties, or as part of the village's overall stormwater management system. Any cooperation or costs incurred as a result of this cooperation shall be at the village's expense, or otherwise, as may be mutually agreed by the village and the applicant.
That's the motion.
Okay, and that's for ordinance number M four twenty twenty, in case there's any question on that. Okay, we haven't, we have a motion on the table, and we can, we can ask questions.
We should have a second first.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second? Now you can go, Bob.
Thank you. So, this, this comes back, it doesn't come back, can't come back for a reintroduction, a review and reintroduction, it has to become, come back for adoption at that time?
Correct. But at that point, you're free to vote on it, defer, I mean, you're not obligated to vote on it. It's up for...
You can mark it up.
Could we table, yeah, I mean, I mean, if, if, if it's not satisfactory at the next round, we could table it for another, another round of conversations?
I'd like everyone to have a shot to mark it up.
What's that?
I'd like everyone to have a shot to mark it up.
Oh, definitely. I mean, you know, I mean, this is a big, this is a big change to what the ask is, so I think everybody needs time to, to look at it and think about it. I mean, I do, I, I, I think it's important that we act in good faith to try to rectify the conditions in the columbarium, because it's, you know, it is difficult and for anybody who's even sort of challenged in terms of trying to move around in there. So, I think, you know, we need to respect that, you know, their wishes to do that.
Well, Penny, we're past that already. We were, we have a, we have a, a motion on the table. It's been seconded. We're trying to just answer questions relative to the, to the motion.
Yeah, so on a motion, you had, with, you know, no cost to the church, and it'd be the village's responsibility. It could also be the adjacent land, landowners.
That's not on the table.
Right, that'd be a different issue, right?
I just want to make sure we're not giving any...
No, no.
Yeah, nobody's committed to anything, and candidly, I don't think we're going to have to do anything here with what we're doing close by. But, we don't exactly know what could happen with these improvements, and putting that aside, we don't know exactly what we might need to address these local conditions, and I want to make sure everybody understands that, and that life isn't stopping in flooding areas, but we're looking ahead for once.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. We answered trustee Dearborn's question, I believe, right, Bob?
You sure did.
Okay. So, we move forward with a roll call vote.
Trustee Kreip, yes. Trustee Swark?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Lambfier?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. This will be up for the next hearing, folks, at, help me out here, Rob.
February eighteenth.
February eighteenth. Thank you. Okay, that was interesting. Item number nine, old business, there is none. Item number ten, new business, design review board comments, internally illuminated sign regulations. At the request of a local business owner, the council directed the design review board to study amendments to the village's sign code to allow illuminated lights in shop windows. Tonight, we will hear DRB's preliminary recommendations. What I want to make clear at this point is that we aren't making any decisions, we aren't even making any directions. What we're really trying to do is hear what design review initially says to us, with the potential of asking them to really roll up their sleeves and do some heavy lifting, and bring something back to us that's worth us having, I think, a study session that we could, we could, we could dig into then, and really talk a lot about the merits and demerits of, of any ideas. So, David, go ahead and take it away.
Yeah, I'm...
Yeah, I was just going to be brief. So, you had asked the DRB for their initial thoughts, if they were open to considering allowing internally illuminated signs. So, that was in November, and there was number DRB meeting. We gathered some general information for them to consider. We presented them with images of the recently installed internally illuminated signs. We reviewed our current regulations, which is how we regulate the elimination of signs. We provided them with some examples of internally illuminated signs from a nearby community, and they're thinking about what it would look like. And then we provided them with some excerpts from nearby community sign regulations related to internally illuminated signs. And so, they had an initial discussion, that they did dive in real deep, but all five of the members who were present are open to considering allowing internally illuminated signs. They, they didn't think that an internally illuminated sign in itself would not fit within the community, but how it is applied specifically. And so, they would need to spend some time working on what the design guidelines may be, looking at what they may, what we may have in the sign regulations, maybe as a minimum requirement, and that the design guidelines provide some guidance and flexibility in terms of creativity. So, they were, they are open to consider. So, we just wanted to report that to you, and unless we hear from you not to continue to study it, we will work with the DRB, and as President Brett said, come back with a formal recommendation, and then we'll sit down with you to talk about that recommendation. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sure, I'll start real quick. I guess as you go forward with DRB and discussions on signage, how will TVs come into play, inside the building, inside the storefront? The TV is a sign these days. It's a display board.
And that's something we'll have to look into.
Right, right.
Can you dive into any details about it?
Yeah, so to make sure that maybe that's just addressed? Any kind of graphics, including TVs or LED screens, whatever you might call them, projection screens, all the above. Thanks.
Questions for David?
If, if you all move forward, which I think it makes sense for you to do, is the next step in this, or the idea being that you might come back to us and say, here are some examples of what we think might be acceptable if we were to modify the policy? Is that...
Yeah, I think that we can come back with, okay, what would be those standards and design guidelines, and what we're hoping to achieve.
Yeah. I'll need pictures. Simple.
And samples.
Samples, yeah.
Working on a twenty forty plan, right? We have to catch up to the twenty forty plan of signage, too. Graphics have changed so much over the last thirty, forty years. It's crazy.
I agree. Jack, you have any, any questions?
I just, the, David's memo says that an animated sign is a television screen. It's prohibited, right?
Uh-huh. But, there is one.
No, no, I'm saying it's prohibited. If there is one, there is one, but it's, it's prohibited.
And it's, in my mind, tasteful. The Beneventi and Stein, I think, in their window, they got a TV, which is, could be nice. Depends what's on it.
Yeah, that's...
Right.
Questions, questions? Penny? Okay, I'd open it up for public. Teresa, I assume that's why you're sitting around here all evening. Yeah, there's nothing good on TV tonight, anyway, so...
I'm going to look at my card and everything.
Yeah, welcome.
Who do we send the bill to?
So, Teresa Lucis, the Graves' line store, eight twenty-one, that's at court. So, I'm not here to weigh in at all.
On illumination or non-illumination. What I am here to request is that the scope of the project be expanded. And so, I've spoken with Chris Marks, and we've had some emails, and kind of bounced around what we were looking to do. And I think between the combination of me trying to decipher just municipal code, and he admittedly saying he was kind of new to that area of it, I, I don't know that we were able to really communicate, that I was able to communicate on my request. And so, what I did was, I went through, and I pulled out the municipal code that I think I'm looking for, and I brought pictures...
Nice.
...of what I'm looking for. And so, I'm going to, yeah.
We like pictures.
Yeah, that's...
So, in the simplest of terms, I'm looking for to be able to post a display case outside of the businesses. And so, in talking with Chris, he said, I was not the first to request that, which doesn't surprise me, because a lot of high-end restaurants do that. They're not going to use a sandwich board. You know, I tried the middle opt, I've tried the sandwich board, and, you know, you pretty much chase that down the street, right? And I get where I'm at, the wind comes up stronger, but you pretty much chase it down the street. In fact, I was on the phone today with a business owner on Chestnut Street, and we had to end the call, because he said, my sandwich board is blowing away. You know, and so, and they're not, candidly, they're just not as nice, right? They're typically chalk, or you can get the kind of ones where you get the printed posters. So, I wanted something nicer, so I tried the floor display option, and it was beautiful. I mean, really, it was great. And I could tell by watching, people stopped, they looked at it, more people came in the store to ask about it, et cetera. The problem is, is that's indoor only, and so it was blowing down the street. I even put an ankle weight on it, thinking it would kind of, you know, give, at the bottom. And the other is, it doesn't lock, and someone stole the, because it doesn't lock, the water, the, the waterproof thing in the door to keep it from not getting wet. And when I went back to order another one, you know, they don't sell replacements for that. You have to buy the whole set again. And so, really, the fact is, it blew away. You know, so, what I'm looking for, as well as talking to some others, is the display case. One is, they're much more professional, they're year-round, right? Where the other two, you have to take off appropriately for shoveling, or, you know, for snow. And they're waterproof, you can lock them, and I just fit, I, I, this is an opinion, think they fit better overall with the village in terms of some of our businesses. And while I don't have data, I can tell you that I think I personally will get more input into my store, because I know how much it increased when I went from the sandwich board to the floor, floor display, and then by the display case for functions and specials. And I also think it encourages people to linger from business to business, especially as we're getting nicer restaurants in, when they put up their menu, and for businesses like myself and the bookstall, who tend to have a lot of events. So, I'm just asking for the scope to be expanded to include that.
Where are those local, those local spaces, that they just...
Yeah, so, yeah, they're, they're drilled in on the outside, and my landlord was open to it, as long as it fit with the village. And so, like, some of the, this is a two-sided piece of paper. And so, one of the things, it says it has to be facing a courtyard, and I happen to be across from Offutt Mall, but that's also... across from Moffett Mall, but that's also not where I want. I'll speak to the grapes. My building has an angle, and that's ideal where to put it, because then you get Chestnut Court as well as Chestnut Street. Bringing it down across from Moffett Mall isn't it? And I think that where I've seen it at restaurants, they tend not to put it right next to the door, because they want people more comfortable to look at the pricing and the menu options. So, I think it's really up to the landlord and the business owner, as well as the village. Again, I give them one other, my landlord also said that, because there are some holes in there now, I don't know how they get it, but like, I have to reuse, he put in the, I get this, I have to use those same reholes, I'm not putting in separate, you know, I'm not doing a whole new set.
Is that something that can also be lit up, internally lit?
Yes, so, on the backside, I put, you know, to include, and I have to be honest, I think this is the right ordinance, you know, but to include, because when these boxes are purchased, they come with lights, and they're inside, and they're small. It's enough to make it readable at night. And so, that was one of my requests, is to allow the option, because you can buy these display cases with or without lighting. And that's why I want, but I want to make sure, it's not, I'm not commenting on the neon light, just to make it readable at night, especially, because I'm across from a restaurant that's just open before then, is you could see when people finish dining at the prior restaurant in the summer, they're just looking to walk. Like, they're not looking to walk straight home. You know, and so, just to kind of add that additional advertising. There are a lot of these in France. They're all over this, like, I, oops, all of this. I live in the city, and any fine dining restaurant, you're going to see that, because they want the people comfortable to know the price point before you walk in, right?
Again, a great example, I was a week or so ago, going in Fred's garage, and there were two people reading the glass window of the door where they have a menu posted. And I'd like, you know, come on in, it's a great place, you know, but it'd be nice to have everything lit up so people can look around and make choices. And, you know, you go to any kind of restaurant street, it's very common practice now.
For example, I do monthly wine tastings. I, the biggest response, I guess, I do cork recycling, and I just had that up there as at the bottom, like, this little corner thing, you know, when we're in a very green-aware environment. But I think, you know, it's a buck fifty to print that at Kinko's or to go to the local printing thing. So, I'm just asking for it to be expanded, and to be viewed separately from the illuminated lighting.
Seems like a no-brainer to me. What do you guys think?
Yeah, as long as it's...
It's got to be simpler than the stormwater.
On each particular building, wherever may be appropriate, yeah?
I mean, it makes sense to send it to the design review board, too.
Oh, yeah, I mean...
Yeah, to be included in, that's right, to be included in, since you were asking for approval to expand, keep looking into it, just to be included in and separate discussion from the illuminated lighting.
Super.
Thank you for doing this, it's really helpful.
Yeah, thanks, this is good stuff. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
David, you'll make sure that you connect with Teresa and get this info, so we can use it for DRB as well? Awesome.
I just wanted to mention that we did receive an email from President, past President Jessica Tucker, echoing some concerns about signage and lighting in general. And David, I hope you also share this, you know, her observations with the DRB as well. You know, she makes some statements relative to the character of the community, and I certainly think it's worthwhile that the DRB at least give that some consideration. Right? Boy, if I would have known it was going to be that fast, I would have done that first. Okay. Item 11, appointments. I have a special appointment this evening. I need a motion to appoint Rob Epitoff as a village trustee to fill the vacant, unexpired term of former trustee Ann Wedner.
Second.
Okay, and this will be a roll call vote.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Swark?
Yes.
Trustee Lambfier?
Yes.
Trustee Coladarchi?
Yes.
Great. Rob will be sworn in sometime between now and next Tuesday, and he will join us for his first meeting on the 11th, so... I got this mess, okay. When I leave my glasses at home, everything... You cheater. Somebody's got to start the meeting, Penny, I'm sorry. Okay, closed session. I wish. May I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss, and please hold on here, to discuss legal counsel for the village pursuant to section 2C1, and for the purpose of discussing the lease of real property for use by the village pursuant to section 2C5 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act? That's, I need a motion.
Some second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Coladarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Swark?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Lambfier?
Motion carries. But we will, council will adjourn immediately after the closed session, thank you.